I'll do that for the next meeting.
Uh, we call the meeting to order of the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees. We are at the Administration Building. It's Tuesday, July 11th, 2017 at 6:30 PM. And I welcome our few guests we have.
Our crowd.
Yes.
Hello, crowd.
And we'll now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to begin by entertaining a motion to approve the agenda as submitted and amended. Thank you, Chris.
Second.
Not second, thank you. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any patron comments on agenda items? Didn't think so. From the patrons. We will now move on to the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 6:13:17, the personnel report, retirements, resignation, leaves of absence, et cetera, approval of the June 2017 claims, 46866 to 47085, the appointment of Mark Beard to the Connersville Redevelopment Commission, and donation, a donation of $21,500 from the Fayette County Foundation, and $28,500 from the Frazee PTO for the Frazee Elementary Playground.
Was that the Wizards money?
That was part of it, yes.
Wow.
Yeah, great.
And they are installing, if you drive by Frazee and check it out, they were putting the border and surfacing, that's the next thing to do, so the equipment's in, so if you get a chance to drive behind there, it looks really great, nice addition for the community.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll take that motion.
Thank you, Lori. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Andy. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we will now move on to action items, and we'll begin with the Personnel Report, recommendations for employment. Mr. Circlaw.
Well, thank you. Recommendations for employment for the certified staff, Robert House for special education at the middle school, and Tom Elliott, bus mechanic, as a classified staff member in the Transportation Department, and then extracurricular assignment, Becky Hartgrove, Department Chair of Special Ed for the high school, or middle school, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion for the Personnel Report.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you very much, Warren. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the unpaid meal procedure. Janie Kellum-Tollin.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. U.S. Department of Agriculture is requiring school corporations to develop an unpaid meal procedure that defines their delinquent accounts, what processes they use to collect those monies, and what alternate meals, if any, they serve to students. This is our development of a policy for Fayette County School Corporation. We have been mindful of alternate meals not being identifiable so as to call out the students. It's not the students' fault that the parents have not put money on their account. The students in the parent, students at secondary will be advised when their account is getting low. At elementary, the communication will be directed with the parents. These documents will be included as a part of our registration materials, and the parents will acknowledge that they have been made aware of what our collection policy is. We'll also communicate these to staff members, so everyone's on board.
Janie, I asked Scott this after I saw this. Is it possible that schools can collect donations from parents for unpaid meals?
Yes. We have, at Eastview, specifically, I know, there is an individual who will periodically bring money in and ask that it be applied to the student's delinquent accounts. I will tell you, when you write these accounts off, you cannot use school food service money to write an account off. You have to rely on donations, or we have to take from another fund to write that off. So our first level of effort is the collection agencies to try and collect those accounts. So.
I don't know if any principals are doing this now, but...
You know, something else I shared with Scott, for those of us when we had our elementary kids in school, you know, a letter would come home from the teacher about needing boxes of Kleenex for the room. Can teachers and/or principals in a newsletter say if anybody is wanting to donate to help out delinquent food bills, whatever? Is that possible for them to publicize as a, as something, or do you think that, and maybe having a principal here, you could say if that's awkward, or that would be... And I don't know if it's a huge problem and something that's...
If we just... To make us aware, so we started getting lists of kids who were up to two charges because after three, they would be alternated, so they had three charges. So we would ask them to make us aware, so we started making some personal calls to the parents. Sometimes they just didn't know.
Okay.
Because the kids just don't tell.
Yeah, and in secondary, the student is to carry the message home, and they are to be coached. This is, I get that.
No, that helps a little bit.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I just wondered what was optional.
I don't know, I think that would be up to Mrs. Casaro about what goes in the newsletter home.
But maybe it's not that big of a deal, I just thought.
I don't know that it's, I think even, you know, at my time at Maplewood, it wasn't a large number, and our social workers do a great job at either contacting the parents or giving the parents some resources, and there are quite a few individuals that do come in and ask to give donations.
Okay, great.
So I think right now, the way they're handling it is working.
Good.
But I don't, I don't see that it would be a really big issue, it's just...
Our goal is for those that qualify for free or reduced lunch.
To fill out.
To get them on for your reduced lunch.
And that's where the social works.
And get the applications.
Do a nice job.
Get them certified for those services, because the benefits extend beyond free lunch or reduced price lunch. That then extends to textbooks.
So what percentage of students that qualify for free and reduced lunch are not signed up for it? No idea? Okay.
Yeah.
There would be no way of knowing, because you don't, you don't know. We receive direct certification from the state periodically for those that are on SNAP, TANF, and those are what we refer to as direct certified.
Okay.
The older students get to, the fewer kids you see identified. Our high school numbers are not proportionate, I don't believe, with our elementary, because a lot of the high school students don't want, even though we try to keep all that information very confidential.
Yeah. Okay.
So how do we handle that, especially at the high school? Randy, remember, I sent you a text, Scott, and I sent you a text about some state was challenging, you know, the shaming situation?
Yeah.
But, so if a kid comes through, their account is empty, how do we handle that when they're in the lunch line?
That's the purpose of this policy.
Yeah, that's the purpose.
Make it consistent throughout the whole corporation, okay.
And at elementary and secondary, yeah, I don't... The meal will not be identifiable. So if I tell you how it's not going to be identifiable, then it becomes identifiable.
Right.
I'm glad you followed me on that, Mr. Beard, because, so, that's why we have not, you know, put that out there in full print about how, what that is.
Okay. Well, thank you for that.
Because we do want to protect the children's privacy as well, and so, and while we've been sensitive to that as a district, that this policy is something that's required, and, you know, certainly here for discussion before approval. The key is making sure our kids get their meals and are fed. That's number one priority with Chartwell and with our district, so.
Yeah, and not just a peanut butter sandwich and an apple and a milk. To me, that is not an acceptable practice.
But it's interesting, with the high school kids, when you fill out a free or reduced price lunch form, you have to list all of the students that are there. Is it just that some of the high school kids do not take a vet? If they're in the system, I guess you have to list all, all of the students on the, on the form, whether they be in kindergarten or whether they be in 12th grade. So what's, I guess, I'm curious as to why the, the high school situation's a little bit different. It's just these kids, how would they be identifiable to begin with when they go through the, to the line? And you seem to indicate that the numbers were lower for the high school kids.
They're not.
I'm not, I'm not following how that happens.
They used to be identifiable when you have more manual systems.
Yes.
And I think that stereotype, or that, that belief, yeah, the stigma, still exists that there's a way for people to know that, so.
Of course, there really isn't. You type in your, you just type in your number and it comes up.
I think, you know, if, if Kim and I lived in the same house, and Kim qualified for free and reduced lunch for her children, I believe because I live in that house, my children would also qualify. So another part of the puzzle, my hope is with these more standardized addresses within Power School, we'll be able to identify that Kim and Janie lived together and capture all of those kids who may have two or three or four different last names.
Exactly.
Because we have others that are, are sharing our home with us, so.
It's a good point.
Yeah, well, yeah, certainly, certainly.
Okay, well, thank you all. Okay, may I entertain a motion for the approval of the unpaid meal procedure?
Motion.
Thank you, Mark. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ann. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, onto the next item, city permanent and temporary rights of way for Grand View project.
Yes, as the city continues to work on Grand View, they've made an offer to obtain a permanent right of way for a portion of the Grand View property, and a temporary right of way for a very small portion. John has met with them, this doesn't, you know, come through the middle of the building or anything like that, it's just out on the road, you know. The reality is, they'll exercise eminent domain if we don't approve it.
My fault.
So, you know, I'm encouraging you to access their offer and the goodwill that we hope will go along with it, but.
And that'll save a lot of hassle.
Yeah.
Getting eminent domain too is not...
But that's going to improve that whole area for us, too, as far as the Grand View property, we do.
Yeah, sure.
Great. All righty. I'd like to entertain a motion for the city permanent and temporary rights of way.
I see a movement.
Thank you, Chris. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Andy. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Request for textbook approval, Kim.
Thank you, President Jacobs. In your packet, you will see a memo from Mr. Judd. We are asking for your approval for a new music appreciation book. It did not come to our attention until late June that Ivy Tech was changing this book, and because it is a dual credit, we are required to use this book. And because it is part of our textbook fees, any, any student that's taking this course will be paying for this book with part of their CHS textbook fees, so we're just asking for your approval to utilize this textbook.
Okay.
I see a move.
Thank you, Ann. Any second?
Second.
Thank you, Warren. I keep forgetting to say, any discussion? Obviously, we've been discussing, no discussions. All those in favor, raise your, raise your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, substitute teacher compensation, Mr. Circlaw.
Thank you. A priority of mine as we interviewed Ann, Mr. Collins, as he did his tours around the different schools, was an issue that a lot of schools are facing with a problem of not having enough substitute teachers. So we tried to tackle this the best we can, and did it in two ways. One, we got information from the teachers and the principals about what needed to happen, and two, we talked to some substitute teachers and asked them, what can we do differently that may make that more attractive and get more people involved? I think in, in the letter that you see there, we had about 13% of our absences were not filled last year due to not being able to have a substitute teacher. Now, it doesn't mean they weren't filled, what it means is, we had to take people out of support positions, whether they were other teachers on prep, whether they were aides. If you walked in the building, we might have put you in there. You know, we did what we could to fill those.
I'll preface that.
So we tried to put a plan together. The first thing is, we looked at other schools, the name substitute teacher has a bad connotation to it. Oh, you're a sub!
Only a sub.
Only a sub. So we looked around, and we found some different names, and we threw a bunch of them here, there, and everywhere else, and we came up with guest instructor to give it a little boost, to make it a little bit more than the substitute teacher. So that's the first thing you noticed on the recommendation, is we're trying to change the name or change the image, basically. The second thing is, as you all know, increase in pay always helps a little bit when you're looking to try to fill those positions. We did not increase the first level, which is $65, and that is someone who has a high school diploma, a GED, which is now called an HSE, possibly has taken some hours towards college credit, and has taken the para-pro test, that's still $65. What we're trying to aim for are higher quality subs, if I could say it that way. So what we did is increase, and you can tell that we increased currently $70 for a bachelor's degree, went to $80, and then, or I'm sorry, went to 75, and then 10 years of teaching experience went to 85. The one thing we really were excited about is trying to create a special category for retired teachers. We wanted to try to bring them back into the fold. You know, you don't have to work five days a week, you can work one day a week, you can work Monday this week and Wednesday next week, or whatever. So what we did is create that level for retired teachers, and we made that $90 to start with, you know, as our recommendation, and try to bring them in, into our program. As we go through some of the other things, and there are several, we've taken a aggressive stand on advertising. So once this board meeting's over tonight, tomorrow, hopefully, we're going to start working on, and we've got some possibilities of different areas around Connersville that we can put up billboards. And basically, the one that we have is, I really wanted a Spartan, and we wanted Mr. Collins dressed as a Spartan and pointing out to you, saying, would you like to make a positive impact on the youth of Fayette County School Corporation?
A little Sam.
Get involved, become a guest instructor, call the HR office, and in this case, we have two companies that are advertising. We went around and tried to find, I found four sponsors to pay for those billboards, so it's not really costing us anything. The other thing we're doing is, we're putting yard signs up at the schools with the same logo on there. So we're trying to do more things. We're going to have an article in the paper about our new guest instructors. So anything we can do to advertise that, we're looking to do a couple radio spots and things like that. So hopefully, over the next three weeks, you're going to see some of that happen. Some of the other things that we're looking at is, when we talked to the old substitute teachers and asked them, what can we do, what are some things that would make you feel a part of the school? Well, one of them is, we want to give them some opportunities to choose where they want to go. So if I want to work at Maplewood and Frazee, and those are the only two, that's okay with us. If we know that that's where you want to go, that's where you're going to feel comfortable with, you're in that area, hey, that's great, we can work with assigning you there. Same thing, I want to be at the high school and only the high school, that's okay. So we're going to try to do more of that and allow the guest instructor to have more say in what they're doing. An issue was, I go to a school and I don't know where to park. Well, we're putting up signs for guest instructor parking, two at each middle, or two at each elementary school, three at the middle school, and three at the high school. So, you know, that's a little thing, but, you know, as a, as a person that might be afraid to walk in the building, oh my gosh, there's where I'm going to park, you know, they, they really want me here. You walk in the door, and another thing we're going to try is, we're going to give them an opportunity to share in our lunches, and that is, they'll get a meal ticket, and they can get 10 meals a semester.
Cool.
During lunch.
On us.
On us, lunch on us. And, you know, again, a little thing to, to help out. So we're trying to listen to those. The other big thing, I think, is, is a lot of new guest instructors are always leery to sign up, because it almost costs you $100 to get started. You have to pay for your license, you have to pay for, you could have to pay for your para-pro test, and you have to pay for that criminal history check, and that comes up to about $100. So you're in the hole to start with. So what we are going to do is give them up to $100 after they work 10 days to help offset that cost of becoming a guest instructor. So those are some things. We looked at the possibility of making them feel more a part of the school by possibly offering them the same advantage that a teacher might have of signing up to workdays for an all-sport ticket. Anything we can do. I know I subbed a little bit, and of course, I was familiar with the school, but I just can imagine someone who's not familiar with the school coming in there and, you know, wanting to be a part of the school, and I think we've got to do everything we can to try to do it. So that's kind of what we're doing, I'm sure we're going to be doing a few other things, but that's where we're starting. And we're getting phone calls already, and we haven't even started to advertise a whole lot, so I feel pretty good about it, and I want to make it easier on the principals, because, you know, it's, I've been there. You know, it's tough if you're going to go to that teacher who has a prep period and say, oh, please, please, would you cover? And in most cases, they probably do it, and they don't say a thing, but you hate to have to do that. So our priority is to try to improve where we've been with guest instructors, and I would appreciate the board approving those plans.
I want to applaud you. As an old sub and a retired teacher, this is a chronic problem that's been going, and it's gotten a lot worse. One of the things, I think, those of us that are retired teachers, and I would suggest this to Mr. Beard, is just talk to your friends. And I've been doing a lot of talking to my retired teacher friends. A lot of them say, I don't want to do that. And I said, it's not, it's pure teaching. It's not the stuff that you went through in the classroom. You know, you don't have to do lesson plans, you don't have to grade papers unless you want to. It's just pure interacting with the kids and making a difference in the kids' lives, which is why most of us went into teaching to begin with. So it's the kind of the purest form of teaching, and you're helping out your colleagues, and I did it so much that I knew 90% of the kids at, at the middle school for the years after I retired. And it's, it's just a tremendous feeling, and you become a part of the community, you become a part of the community, and I think that the emphasis on paying the retired teachers a little bit more, that's great. I think that that could be an incentive that I think, we're not, we, it's a very competitive market, and I think we have to do some things to become more competitive. The, the number of retired teachers living and still living in Connersville is quite large, and I think we need to do a better job, too, with ASOP and teaching them how to use it, and setting up the parameters, and it's not that, it's not that difficult to do. And that kind of training, okay, say, I only want to work at the high school, or I only want to work at the middle school, I only want to work certain days a week, keeps you from getting called on those days. And ASOP does a really nice job, and I think it will help the secretaries, too. If you know that there's going to be a day, or there's going to be a lot of subs, let people know this a little bit earlier, because there's always a scramble on the day that all the English teachers meet or all the math teachers meet, just to get, just to get things covered. And I think we can be more preemptive, even using ASOP. You know, put a calendar of events that are coming up, all English teachers are going to be out on this day, all math teachers are going to be out on this day. So you could have a pool of subs, say, hey, I might have something to do, but I can do it on a different day, so I would be available to, would be available to sub.
I'll make a motion to approve the guest teacher compensation.
Second.
Thanks, Mark. Any further discussion?
I just had a question. Melissa, what is the para-pro test?
The para-pro test is a test to see academically where an individual falls, to make sure they qualify through passing the para-pro to be a, we give it to teacher's aides, we give it to substitute teachers, guest instructors, but it's, it's basically a test that they take to make sure they have some minimal skills.
It's basically a company test into the English math skills, so you want to be sure that you have, and this, our hope with this, and I don't want to belabor this, but as I went around on a listening tour with principals and staff and support staff, this was one of the big issues. So I appreciate Mike's work on this, and I wanted, before we approved this, just recognize the sponsors of these, because we wanted to fund this with vendors and folks we use. So I know that Wilson Olson Myers is sponsoring half a billboard, Wholesale Carpets. We've been working with Main Source, they may help us with some other advertising, Chartwells, and, don't tell me I'm going to remember this, Steve Robbins.
Oh, Milligan.
Oh, he was playing dead.
Anyway, I want to shout out, we're going to have their names on the bottom of the billboard. What, Mike, what does it say at the bottom of that with our sponsor?
It just says advertisement paid for by, and then it was the...
Two, so we'll give them some credit on that billboard, but we have one, Mike has secured one, out by Walmart on Western Avenue, and the other one, we really are wrestling, we want that one on Fifth Street, right at the, at the bridge, there are two when you cross the street bridge. But then he's also talking about a couple other options, so this is a start. So spread the word, when you talk to folks, we want the best quality sub, guest... So spread the word when you talk to folks, we want the best quality sub, guest instructors.
There's a good place on Western. Mark had his, one of his...
Twenty-Ninth and Western.
Twenty-Ninth and Western.
That was a good spot there.
That was a very good spot, Mark.
Plus you get to look at Ruby Sidler's yard and see what decorations she has on. Those two corners right there are beautiful.
That's right.
John Stevens and Ruby Manor.
Well, your face really decorated that area.
Yeah.
I think it's the little ones on there.
So, Mike, are they still offering a training day for the new guest instructors?
Yes, in fact, we've got one, I think it's the 28th. They'll do the training for the new. And then, right after that, we'll have those veterans come in and do a training. And then we're gonna offer, because it's hard in that short period of time to get some training on ASOP, but we're gonna offer a couple different timeframes for them to come in and actually sit down on the computer and work on the ASOP program. Because it's kind of been a problem in the past is, she said that you're not comfortable with that program, maybe you're not gonna get on it and pick a date, you know? So, we wanna give them some options to come in and learn, learn how to do it. Now you can actually do it from your smartphone and there's just so many options available and we need to do a good job of teaching them. So, that's our plan.
You're gonna use a computer lab?
Right.
To do that, so that they can follow the instructions right there and then people...
Also, another thing, a corollary to this is, I know Nancy at the middle school would go in and there would be a list of potential subs and they were not answering their phones, they were not active at all, so...
Mike's cleaning that up too.
Yeah, purging, I think purging that list. And then there were some that say yes, that they would come and they would call at 8:00 in the morning and not show. And that was...
We actually have about 172 people on our old sub list. The trouble is, out of the 172, there's probably only about 25 or 30 that are really active. So, we've sent letters to everybody inviting them to get back on board and we'll give them more training and whatever they need, we're there to help them, so.
And in talking with subs too, we're gonna offer some more training for them on smart boards and some of those technology pieces that they need. So, there's a lot more that we're working on and Mike's leading on that, so I appreciate that. But we're really wanting to try to strengthen our...
Well, it boils down to, it's, you start pulling eggs from other classes to cover classes and then you have gaps. Also, are we going to, there had been a policy not to try to find a guest instructor for an instructional assistant. Are we going, looking into changing that policy?
We really haven't discussed it.
IEP needs the ones that are the primary at this point.
Like our line skill.
Well, no, basically, you have, but if you're, if you're a classroom teacher and you have an instructional aide in that class and you have particularly small children and you have 20 kids in the class and five of those have special needs and you have an instructional aide in that class for that reason, that aide gets pulled frequently sometimes to cover another class, then you're, you're putting that classroom teacher in a very precarious situation because you need that extra, that extra pair of hands, that extra pair of eyes. And I know that there had been a policy not to try to hire if an instructional aide except in a special...
Or any IEP needs. If an IEP, if there's a student in the classroom where an IEP needs to be met, then we would get someone to cover that.
Okay. I think the operant word there is cover. You pull somebody from another class, you know? It becomes a puzzle and I don't know, you know, there are instructional aides that actually have classes without another teacher in there. And the pay for those is awful. It's minimum wage. And these people have responsibilities of an entire classroom, but they are classified as an instructional aide. So if you go in and sub for them, which you have to have a sub for them because basically they teach a class, and it's 7:25, it was 7:25 an hour.
Our lowest pay now is 9:25 for instructional assistants, so we have taken care of that. There are a couple labs, like the middle school, where it's a computer-based program where we do have folks who are in there.
Well, I'm glad that, I'm glad that's been addressed because working, and I've done that, I've taken over that lab, and I was getting paid 7:25 an hour a couple of years ago. So I'm glad that that's been resolved. But again, sometimes, you know, if we can get people to come in and sub for instructional aides at a lower, obviously a lower pay scale, which they would be aware of, then we're not gonna put some of these kids, kiddos and these teachers in such a stressful situation because you just need sometimes the extra people there in order to do your job because of the kind of student, the needy students that we're dealing with. And when you have aides pulled a lot, it makes it very difficult.
I'm hoping this will take care of a lot of that.
I hope so too.
We're gonna keep working at it, this is a priority, so.
Mike, if someone asks me or someone listening tonight, "Hey, I'm interested in subs," what do we tell them?
You call 825-2178 and ask for the HR department and we'll hook 'em up.
Thank you. Okay, I think we've had our discussion, we've already had our motions. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Permission to advertise for request of qualifications for guaranteed energy savings contracts?
That's kind of a mouthful.
It is.
One of the projects that we wish to address with the upcoming bond issue is the chiller issue at the middle school. Those chillers are currently basically in what we consider a hole. They're surrounded by building on three sides. The open side has a gate, they do not get adequate airflow. We are continually replacing compressors on those. The life of them has significantly been reduced by this design. So, we have had conversation previously about energy savings contracts and the design-build approach. We thought this smaller type project, instead of a whole building under an energy savings project, might be a good test drive. So what we are asking the board to approve is our advertisement requesting qualifications be submitted by the individuals who provide these energy savings design-build type contracts. So you were provided with what the, the request for qualifications, the overview, and what these providers will be expected to provide to us as a part of their packet of credentials for us to consider them for this type of work. So, we are requesting your approval of request, permission to advertise for the qualifications.
Okay. Well, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lori.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Chris. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this point in time, we will entertain any public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. And I'm guessing not tonight. Okay. We'll move on to report items. Superintendent's discussion groups reports, principal director reports. None? Okay. Director of Human Resources report, Mike.
Just the report, this is the exciting time of the year, right before the start of school. Every time the telephone rings, we go, "Pff."
And it rang today.
It rang today. So, we'll keep you informed on what's happening. We're in pretty good shape right now, but we know there's a couple positions on the front here that we may be looking for and we'll do our best to find those positions. Also wanna say, we do have a lot of training going on, as we would with the guest instructors on the 28th. Tomorrow, we meet with the new teachers for what we call a benefit meeting to go over all their benefits and have them sign everything and try to get them to understand the benefits and what's available and health insurance. We'll do that tomorrow and then another group comes in on the first. So, that'll be an exciting time for them because when they leave, their eyes will be bigger than their heads and they won't remember anything we said. But, we'll do our best to make sure they understand the benefits that they have. So, again, this is gonna be an exciting time for us over in this office.
Thank you. Director of Finance report, Janie.
Yeah, I get entertained with budget stuff coming up over the next couple months, so I'll take a pass.
We can't wait.
I know. I know, you're sure you're...
These meetings are so much fun.
You're gonna bank your time, aren't you, Janie?
Yes, she is. Just doing you is all.
I'll remind you if you... I know.
Assistant Superintendent's report, Kim.
Um, just to follow up with some trainings, as Mike said, we're busy getting things underway for the upcoming school year. We will be hosting the New Teacher Academy again for all of our new teachers, August 2nd and 3rd. We also are ready to roll out our Power School training, so we will be training all of our staff with Power School. Also, another exciting thing that is about to start is Jump Start for kindergarteners. They will be headed back to the classrooms July 17th. So we're excited to see all those cute little faces and those excited children as they walk through our elementaries. And then just a special thanks to all of our staff members that helped make our summer school session one a success. We appreciate the extra time that those teachers put in to help our kids be the best they can be. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Kim, can you tell me, do you know how many kids are registered for Jump Start and what percent of our incoming kindergarteners are that is that?
I believe we all of our kindergarten classrooms are, we have two sections at each building of our elementaries except for Everton, and I believe we're sitting around 27 to 28 at elementary. It's hard to know who's still out there, but in terms of pre-registration, the majority of students that pre-registered for the year are also attending Jump Start. So, it continues to be a very popular program.
Great.
And parents and students are taking advantage of it.
Oh, that's great news. Okay. Thank you.
We're excited.
All right. Superintendent's report, Scott.
Thank you. Couple things. One, our back to school, our teachers report back August 7th. And traditionally, what's been done here is we have the 7:30, 7:45 kickoff. We're changing that. So, we're gonna let our teachers, and I haven't even announced this out to anyone because I wanted to share it with you first. On that Monday, we're going to have a celebration in the high school auditorium at 2:00 P.M.
Oh, wow.
So...
It's party place.
The thing is, I know that teachers are very anxious to get back to the building and we've traditionally done similar things over the years at this. We're gonna mix it up, we're gonna, we're gonna do a lot of fun stuff, we're gonna, Chartwells is going to help us with ice cream afterwards. Then teachers can choose to go home when we finish up by 3:30, they can just go ahead and take off, they can go back to the building and they can do, go fish if they want. But, our principals are gonna have the teachers there to start the official day back, something different.
More time in the classroom?
Also with that, in the past, all of you have been able to come up and speak and do things. We may mix that up a little bit and I hope, if you're really wanting to get the microphone, let me know that right away, but I would like to invite you to come and I would like to introduce you. I will ask Leslie to speak with me up there and say a few words. I'm working on a former student, a graduate of CHS, who's a really great success story to come in and talk about just the impact the teachers had on his life. So I'm working on an idea with that for motivational, about 10 minutes. So we're gonna do some things different. We'll recognize our teacher of the year, support staff member of the year, and I'm gonna invite every employee in the district to come to this meeting if they would like to.
What about recognizing the ones with the years of service?
Well, we have the attendance, perfect attendance, but I want everyone to be a part of those pieces. So, we can't pay all of our support staff, but if they'd like to come and be a part of that, come for some ice cream, we're gonna open that, extend that out.
What date is that, Scott?
It's August 7th, 2:00 P.M. It's that month. So, anyway, we'll send out more info on that to update you, but I wanted to let you know about that. The fair is coming up and if you haven't gotten with Cindy on that, you know, let her know when you can work the tent. That's always a good time for PR and to get to see folks. And then, we start back with our administrators next week. We have a back-to-school admin retreat meeting on Tuesday, the 18th. So, we're gonna, we're gearing up, ready to go, so we're excited. I think it's gonna be a really great year. Got some really good stuff, got some great teachers coming on board and I think it's gonna be a really great year. I'm excited and I appreciate your continued support.
Thank you, Scott. For the good of the cause, are there board members who would like to share anything tonight?
Just, I heard Mr. Judd and Coach Brown did a great job at the community. I've heard that from several people. Good job, really.
Second career down the road, I hear they're gonna travel.
Yeah, do the circuit now.
The Chamber of Commerce kids should include Coach Brown's speech in their spiel for Connersville. I was not able to attend, but I watched it on TV3 last night and I was at a Chamber of Commerce thing today and I made that suggestion because they always put a tape together. When I moved here 30 years ago, I watched Troy Lewis miss a basketball shot and Connersville win the state championship. So, I think that what Coach Brown had to say, particularly about the ethics and the hard work that these kids did, would be something that would be very, as a parent coming in and bringing your children into a school system, this would be the kinds of things that you would want your child to have, to have emphasized completely. So, yeah, TV3 has it, it's on, I don't know, it was on last night and it was really quite good. The Chamber of Commerce today had Gary Dick from the Indiana Business and I was there and it was very interesting. He talked about the gaps and, and after the meeting, I said, "Well, we had all these kids from Connersville High School that got all these hours from early, from dual credits." And I said, "And one of our valedictorians had 69 hours" and he, I went, "What?" You know, that he was most impressed with that. And I think he probably has had students that he has had, children that he had to pay college tuition for. And how to narrow that gap of, that educational gap. So, very positive meeting today, but I think we should put Coach Brown out there on the stoop for us, as he does. He did a really, really good job. Had good material, good stuff to work with.
I just wanted to say a couple things. I really appreciate all the work, Mike, that you've put into being creative with the guest instructor. Same with you, Scott. You're just bringing this whole breath of fresh air, this idea with the first teacher day. I think that it really shows a little bit of thinking outside of the box, so I think we're really fortunate. Also, I just wanna remind all the board members that we have our retreat on Friday from 9:00 to 1:00 and that's over here at WCC. And we're gonna have a nice presentation by Michelle Cooper, our attorney. And then Scott is going to grace us with the, just a summary of his listening tour, which I think is gonna be pretty exciting for us to hear, along with other things, so... And I heard there's gonna be good food, so...
And I'm not fixing it, so it's always good. Cindy takes care of us.
And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Slow move.
Thank you, Mark. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Thank you.